It's called the Woodbury Select War Meeting to order at 6 o'clock on Monday, September 8th, 2025, in the community room at the Woodbury Library. First order of business is to discuss adjustments to the agenda. This might be a first. Alright, we can move on. The second order of business is to approve minutes from the August 28th meeting. Is there a motion?
I think I passed them over there. Oh, okay. I guess I'll move that we approved those minutes. Although nobody, of all the people I sent this to, nobody mentioned, nobody noticed I had misspelled "August." So at the last minute, I had to reprint everything.
Whoops, about travelers.
Travelers, huh. That, I always have a hard time with that, one or two, but I did change it at the last minute.
It is.
Because it was, had a little under nine, you know.
I was gonna say, your spell check doesn't tell you when it's wrong?
Yeah, um, yeah, it does, but not right away.
Well, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the August 25th meeting minutes as written. Please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Alright, that's that back. We don't have, uh, it doesn't appear that we have anybody here for public comment that isn't also on the agenda. And we can move on unless there's somebody here that would like to make comment as public instead of their capacity as an official. Alright, hearing none, we can move on to the 610 item, which is Michael and Darlene Richardson, who asked to be on the agenda. I called and left a message with them asking if it was something that they maybe wanted to be in public comment for, just to kind of figure out what it was. And I believe Michael left me a message on my voicemail saying that their concerns are about Ainsworth Road and the property that they're trying to sell. And concerned specifically, I think, about the property on the corner of the road. Yep, and, uh, go ahead.
They, they did say they wanted to be on the agenda, so I put them on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
And Robin called them today to make sure that she got the message, but they're not here, so they are on for 610.
Well, we can open it up again if they happen to show up at 610. I did have a quick conversation with Ryan McCall, who is the enforcement, uh, arm of the Agency of Natural Resources. He kind of gave me a little bit of a background on the whole thing. And what happens is it seems like it gets cleaned up, and then they have some other folks move back into the house that have not been there, and things kind of fall apart again. And so it's kind of like a, an ongoing, um, ongoing thing. He also said that he would be willing, if need be, for, to accompany me with, on a site visit. He's got a, he's been working with them since he, a long time. So he's, he's got a relationship with these folks and kind of a mutual respect of some sort. So that may be the next, next step as town health officer. And I, I did not, Diana, you also sent, uh, forwarded a concern about Bliss Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I haven't made it up there yet, but it sounds like it's a, I have to do a site visit there too.
Town, yeah, there are two different complaints of people who are all of a sudden having rats that had not had rats before.
Yeah. And I need to look at it because rats and themselves are not necessarily, uh, a happy to go up and look, but, you know, there, I think that there's certain, certain things that you can, um, find people for, I'm not even sure if that's within the town health officer's purview, but...
Did you, when you met with somebody in Callis, did they talk about possibly having a help from their town health officer? Because I know they, he was very helpful with Michael a few times back when he got sucked into the...
He was, he got done.
Oh, he did? Oh, okay.
I want to say that their town health officer is an actual doctor.
Really?
I believe, isn't that what they said at the...
It's a female, right?
Yeah, it's a woman.
A retired nurse practitioner.
Okay. So I think that they maybe would be open to that, but I think, um, probably that was kind of an example of something that we might be able to collaborate together on as two boards or three boards if, if Worcester became part of this kind of collaboration. And then, if we want, maybe in combination, the town clerk's report and the treasurer's report, we could kind of, Kari sent another email. I'm not sure whether you saw it, I just read it before I came in the meeting. Just asking for, it sounds like we, maybe we need to pursue, if people are interested, pursue something a little bit more formal. And was curious about the tire chains and the snow, that, that contract buying. So we just need to follow up and respond to him, what was, what you found out.
You, you only checked with the health department too, there is a, well, I don't remember her name, but somebody who's there who's very helpful, who can tell you whether an issue of rats on a farm is something that you, you can deal with.
Yeah. I'm not sure how, yeah, I'll, I'll investigate that a little bit further. So, I guess we should move on, and if the Richardson's come, we can circle back to that part of the meeting for, for them. Uh, town clerk's report.
Okay, for the road commissioners advertisement, I got it into the Times-Iris, the Heidi Gazette, News and Citizen, The World, Front Porch Forum, and VLCT.
Awesome.
And today we received information on broadband network construction technician training that goes from Wednesdays through Saturdays, September 17th through October 3rd, 8:30 to 5:30, and it's covered by a grant, so anybody that wants to sign up for this, it's, it's paid for. And then on completion of the training, the participants will get a $500 stipend.
So is this a training for someone who wants to make that a career?
Yep, yeah, so I've got one hung up down to the office, I'm gonna put one on the bulletin board down here. And then, there's some that I can just cut up and leave on the office if somebody comes in. And I wear, big copier was down a week ago. So it would have been two weeks today it went down, we were out of toner.
Right.
I placed the order, the guy that took my order was in a car accident, so the order got whaling. So it finally got here last Monday, so the copier is back in operation again. So I started doing recordings again. And, uh, what else do I have to use? Mike and Darlene, we talked about Coco's raccoon. I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Town treasurer's report, Lily Baron.
Great, um, a lot more brief this, this time around. So a quick overview of August financials. Second half of August, we collected 25800, or, oh goodness, where are my words today? $258,096 in tax revenue. Which is great, within the first two weeks, that's awesome. For our budget versus actuals going through, it seems that spending remains on track or below projections. Only hot button item still is RV Tech, which we're a little over on. This month invoice seemed steady, um, didn't see astronomical, seem astronomical. So I think that's one of those things that will just even out over the next couple, um, months, hopefully, but I'll keep an eye on it. For our fund balance, one thing to note, if we want to go to the next page, our highway fund balance is projected to show a temporary deficit for the next two months. So if you look on right underneath, um, general fund is highway fund, and it's got just under $2,000 at the end of August. This temporary deficit is, was beginning to sacrifice.
Are you on page one?
Yeah.
This way, yep, yep.
So, page one, okay.
Got it, thank you.
Of course. This temporary deficit is normal, uh, because we collect our tax revenue in the general fund. Once all taxes are in that October 30th due date and we transfer the funds over to the highway, that'll look a lot different. This deficit usually happens, when I was looking back at the history of the past four years, the highway fund dips into a deficit for a short period of time.
Is it usually about this time of year?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So, in addition, um, I created, maybe created isn't the correct word, I repurposed Fund 14. So if you move all the way down, right above Lister's Education, you'll see the fund called FEMA buyout. That is for, um, our FEMA buyout that we're working on. This fund, Fund 14, in the past was used for previous buyouts, so it's essentially already set up with all of the accounts that we need for it, so I just repurposed it for, um, this one as well. If you look over, uh, you'll see two negative numbers, negative, or, um, 563 and negative 600, and then you'll see a blank spot. That is going to be fairly normal looking for this fund, this is a reimbursement fund. So depending on the month and when we receive a reimbursement, you'll see a negative amount, and then you see that pop back up to zero because we're getting reimbursed for it the following month.
We did get reimbursed for that $600, right?
Exactly, which is why there is no fund, or, maybe I should put a zero there from, from now on. Um, but yeah, that's why you see that.
So it should look like zero?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, great.
Great, and then you'll also see, if you move, oh goodness, where is this one? Oh, where is it? Oh, the FEMA 2023 flood, so that's about three up from the FEMA buyout. You'll see that we're down to, um, just under 464,000, um, or 465,000, just under that. That was after we had processed the large payments for TH23 and TH24.
But does that also include, um, have you also deducted for the culvert projects that have been done?
Yes, yes, so there have, um, not in their entirety. Me and Skip are gonna meet on Thursday to discuss this, um, and then I'll get with LFE to see if there's anything else in the grid in those mitigation process, um, mitigation projects that should be in that fund, that are currently in that fund. But right now, this is the most up-to-date number that we have for this fund. Two quick updates, so our line of credit, um, I pushed our start date out to mid-October. I did this since October is a very high revenue month for us. If everything goes crazy and something astronomical happens and we have to pay our interest in October 2026, we'll have enough funds in the bank to be able to do that without having to worry or interfere with other things. So those e-signature documents will be sent to you the week of 10/13. I believe we have a meeting on 10/13, I'm gonna try and get those e-signature documents to you guys, um, that day, or have the big one to you that day, just in case if anybody wants me to walk through the e-signature process, I'm here to help with that. I've got the paperwork sent in for our new highway vehicle, um, so that anticipated 90 days out. Payment date is, um, 11/24/25. So that's kind of our next large payment that we'll be making, other than education tax. Any questions for you guys?
So that'll be reflected, that her fund will go to zero?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
The what?
The herf.
Oh, the herf, yeah, yeah. But, uh, yeah, oh, okay.
And then we're, we're expecting another 90,000 of that herf?
Yep, yep, from the highway fund.
From the highway fund, yeah.
Correct.
Lily, I just have a question about the FEMA buyout fund. So, the reason there's a negative is it, we're making payments towards a buyout and then FEMA's reimbursing. And what are we buying out? Is, is that the two properties?
Yes.
Okay, and are we, like, why, that seems like a small number to pay for a property, but are we making, like, installments or...
Yeah, it's...
$600 is for the, uh, the title certs that had to be done.
Oh.
And the 563, I'm thinking that was probably for the reappraisal, one of the, one of the building reappraisals got finished.
So there'll be a big number at some point, right, when we actually pay for the property itself?
When we get the property, yeah, when we pay us.
Okay.
Kind of a slow but surely, we'll kind of be tracking, you know, the payments of what the next steps are.
Okay, thank you.
Question, just a quick question. So if the money from FEMA exceeds the amount of money you're raising, what's gonna happen to the excess funds? So say FEMA gives you $500,000 for Jake's house.
For what? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, so the appraisal comes in at 3:50, and you folks and Jake agree on a number and there's excess funds. What's gonna happen to that?
I don't think, doesn't FEMA rely on the appraisal, isn't that why they're requiring an appraisal?
Yeah, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, yeah, I think...
So it'd be something maybe to think about, along with the fire department, which may be a, a different animal.
Different, yeah.
Yeah, but what would happen to the excess money? Do we revert to the town?
Do you suppose that there's, uh, there must be some FEMA procedure for something like that?
Actually, isn't the state much that's paying, doing these two buyouts?
You're right, I think it is FEMA money, but it's coming through the state. So they're the ones that are in charge of things, we don't have to go through your...
Don't hold your breath for money. There's a finding out, anyway, just in time.
Yeah, I mean, if there is, if they pay more than the appraisal, it seems like it should go to the owner, but that's just my opinion.
Maybe one case, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know about the fire department, who's gonna own that, who's gonna get that money? I think they expect that the fire department will get the money.
But if it's a price, say again, at half a million dollars, and funnel through the town is like 600,000 dollars, so there's an extra 100,000 dollars. I don't know much about FEMA buyouts for, for properties. It might be, if the funds are obligated and they're excess like we have for the mitigation projects, do we keep it, or do we send it back to the state, or do we give it to the owner? So anyway, just...
Did this pop up previously, Diana, do you remember the last buyout?
Uh, no, I don't remember, I think we, they gave us the, the money and we passed it through to the owner.
Was it said the last one was the old store, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It was a small one, but...
Did it, did they pretty much provide that the appraisal came throughout? My gut is that's probably what's gonna happen.
Two other updates, real quick. Me and Michael Gray connected on the personnel policy, um, more to come there. I don't think we're necessarily ready to bring anything, but just wanted to let you guys know that we've gotten together and the, the process is, is moving. I also got with LFE, um, so to note, we are essentially emptying out our, her fund. So I got with LFE to start trying to come up with a process of creating or mocking up a potential capital fund for us, so we can start tracking what we need to be raising, um, in order to replace, uh, what comes next.
We used to have a, a vehicle replacement schedule, remember that, Skip?
I do, yeah.
You, you were involved in the last version of it, you and Brandy, and before that, I think Elizabeth Thompson was the first one that created one of those. So we have had one in the past, it just hasn't been kept up.
I'll search for it.
Yeah.
That would be great, yeah.
Maybe some of the old town reports, you should be able to find a example.
I think I probably have a little copy of that on my computer somewhere.
Michael, if you find it, can you send it over?
Sure. I mean, it was sort of a, something on paper that never really got followed very closely, but, but yeah, I think I might still have that somewhere.
Great, perfect. I also wanted to take a couple extra minutes today to kind of go through this new report. I know we've had it for, um, a couple months, two months now, um, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same board, uh, and that hopefully it is working for you guys, that's the main goal here.
You have a question?
Yes.
My first question is, this budget, uh, budget column, is that something that spit out of the program? Because a lot of these things are not monthly budgeted, they're just one time, you know, like, uh...
Diana, can I ask, are you on the budget versus actual report, which is the...
Yes.
Yes, okay, so you're asking.
Page one, yeah.
Yeah.
So some of these things, um...
So, all of this is...
I think the, the, NIMRIC must have spit out some of these.
Yes.
Oh, they just divide by 12 and they put that in your, that's your budget?
Yes, so essentially how this Excel is created is that we have raw data that comes from, uh, NIMRIC. So you can export Excel in NIMRIC, and then from there, we have a spreadsheet with formulas in it that essentially create the, um, monthly budget, um, which is, you know, just divided by 12. Which is why you'll see some things like the current tax revenue. We all know that our tax revenue comes in August through October, and then delinquencies after that. So you'll see in the current tax revenue item line, you have our total budget for FY26. Then you have our monthly budget, and then you have our actual. So this is expected that it's going to be much higher, um, as we go throughout the year, will, um, that monthly budget will be closer to our actual. And you'll also see the variance here as well, so that's how much more we're ahead than what our monthly budget is. And then that last item line is the percentage of where we are in terms of our year-to-date target.
Well, we're really not ahead, because the budget line is kind of artificial, but...
Yep, yep, um, great.
So you're gonna do this once a month?
Once a month, for, yep, for the previous month. Um, and like I said...
When you said "we" that had the calculations in there, who are the "we's"?
Me and John, four times together, John's a wizard at Excel formulas. So for the first two months, like I said, we're pretty steady on where our finances are supposed to be, ours. Our expenditures and our revenue is steady as the year goes on. I'm expecting to have more to give to you, but since we're still really early in our budget year, fiscal year, then, you know, things are steady for now. Any questions that you guys have on this report?
I have no questions, I'm just still kind of like wrapping my head around this, but, um, no, I think it makes sense to me.
And so anything that we need to be worried about, you got highlighted, like, like on page two, the RV Tech, which we think is primarily, and that's only because, you know, it breaks that down, that 9,000 that we've budgeted, we've spent 1,500, or we, we should have spent 1,500 by now, and we've actually spent 3,200. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
But presumably, we'll get back on track, or, yeah.
Yeah, when I close out, so, um, at the end of every month, you have to close out the period in NIMRIC, and that's where I grab all this information. And so what I do is, we have this, um, we close the month, then we have the report, um, and I'll go through and I'll see any item lines that are already highlighted, um, see things that I need to highlight, and kind of maneuver, um, where we are, essentially. So just another opportunity for me to be able to go through our budget, make sure that our item lines are looking the way that they should be. If I've made any mistakes, I'll be able to catch them at the end of the month before I bring this report to you guys at the first meeting.
On page three.
Yes.
Miscellaneous, why is it 6,483 negative percentage?
Because our, um, our monthly budget is 83, and right now, we have a large sum sitting in miscellaneous. The majority of this is trying to figure out our, um, increase in health insurance, no, not health insurance, our increase is...
The premium assistance thing?
No, it's, I misspoke, it's not having to do with our health insurance, it has to do with our property insurance. So since we increased our property insurance, we got a lump sum in one quarter instead of having it against all four quarters. And so the distribution Excel is a work in progress, um, and I'm, essentially it's sitting there now. It won't be sitting there forever.
So at some point, it will be in insurance?
Yes.
So, but just to follow up on that, so that miscellaneous, it looks like, it looks like we budgeted $500 for miscellaneous expenses in the general fund, right?
Yep.
We, so far, should have spent $83.
Well, no, but...
Yeah, well, roughly, I think, it's just, it's just a benchmark, right? I understand that it could be higher than that, or whatever. But we actually have spent 5,400, is that true?
We have only spent 5,400, that number is only there because, um, this expense is sitting there because it hasn't been distributed.
I understand, yeah, okay. So it's just, it's looking for its proper place?
Yes.
So is this our liability insurance?
Our property and casualty insurance, so we increased, um, our coverage on the school building, um, and this building. And they essentially just put it into one quarter, which is constant, all host of calculations that need to be done now.
Got it.
So we pay liability insurance and property and casualty separately? Or is that...
Well, it all comes from VLCT, so it's the breakdown, yeah.
So, but we've got a line item here, 48, that's liability insurance, 17,000. Is that what we spend with VLCT insurance?
For the year, that is what it's budgeted.
Yeah, so that includes liability and property and casualty?
I believe so.
Okay, so that number will eventually come out of that line.
Well, we, it'll also come out a portion of, um, from the town highway, so on and so forth.
Because a portion comes out, oh, yeah, got it.
Yeah, so we have a, a total bill, so with the additional 6K for the year, uh, each $20,000 for this quarter. And out of that, uh, we use an Excel spreadsheet that distributes a percentage amongst all of our funds. Or not all of our funds, but highway, library, general, yeah.
Thank you, Josh. Any other questions before we move on?
You've got the fuel bits?
Yes. Here you go.
Oh.
Oh, we got more on?
Remind me, this is heating fuel, is that over?
You will notice that suburban got opened.
Yeah.
It was way down on the bottom of that envelope, down on the outside, way down here. It was way down on the bottom of that envelope, down on the outside, way down here. Nope. Way down here, they got heating oil, propane, and then these, when it went through the postage machine.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so that's why it was, yeah, thought it was a bill. Okay. Here's bid number one from Suburban Propane. Number two fuel, three dollars and five cents a gallon. Propane, one dollar and seventy cents a gallon. I didn't look at the second page here.
Are there just two bids?
Yes.
Yeah. Is the other one from Gillespie?
Yes.
Yeah.
Three oh five and one seventy. So then we have the Gillespie's. Number two fuel oil, two fifty-four gallon.
Wow.
And propane, one fifty-one.
Sounds like Gillespie's the winner.
Hmm?
Sounds like Gillespie is the winner.
Yeah, that's good. I was hoping, because I mean, they just put in a new heating system, so it would be nice to continue our...
Do we have to consider any other charges? Are there like, do we need to factor in possible, I don't know, delivery charges or any thing like that?
Is there anything on there?
Um...
Price today, tax, tax in total, tax and fee total for the five thousand. We don't have to pay this upfront, right? We pay, it, it gets delivered, is it?
That's why you spend the pass.
Yeah.
So, it's a prepay. So I believe that we've put money into the accounts, and then we essentially use them throughout the year.
Okay.
Hmm.
We pay per drop-off for diesel.
Okay.
We pay what?
Per, per delivery for diesel.
For diesel, okay.
Yeah.
So there was a question at the last meeting whether we do a bid price for diesel, but...
I don't think we do.
I don't think we do either, but somebody thought we did, so, okay, okay.
I can look into if that's the norm in other towns, and it's looking maybe something we should be doing.
Yeah.
And it is something that we talked about, uh, with Kari, maybe even putting that up the bid, so that, you know, diesel became maybe bigger volumes, generate more leverage.
Yeah, I, I recall that they, nobody would give us a price on diesel.
Oh.
Because it's just not, you know, too volatile.
Too volatile. So do we need to make a formal motion to approve the bid from Gillespie?
I think we should.
So, um, just have a comment about the diesel. So, um, I remember that Gillespie, that's their tank that's there, and that's why they deliver the fuel there. If we're gonna do a bid and look for other people, then they might take the tank away, we might have to put in the tank there, so...
Yeah, I realize that, the, the, yeah, somebody else, I figured they're priced because they wouldn't have to replace the tanks, so...
I think this would be a potential down the line, we would have plenty of time to plan for something like that. If, if we were sending diesel out to bids along the other canal, but...
Um, one other thing to note, um, I don't have the exact number. It's just under, um, two thousand dollars that we still have in credits at Gillespie's. Um, so, um, what we pay forward will be less essentially, um, than the full amount. Since we still have some credits that carried over.
Okay.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Uh, make a motion to go with the Gillespie bid.
Is there any discussion?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor of approving the bid from Gillespie for two dollars and fifty-four cents for, per gallon for number two fuel, and dollar fifty-one per gallon for propane, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
I wanna sign this and I can give, give a ten minute and...
Thank you. All right, thanks, Lily.
Thank you.
All right. So it sounds like, um, was Jonah supposed to come to the meeting?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Sounds like we have a resignation from the zoning board of adjustment.
Yes.
We need to make an appointment. We don't have a candidate at the moment, correct?
We do.
We do.
I thought I wrote, I thought I sent you an email moment.
You said you had been trying to reach out to that person, but you hadn't been able to touch me.
Well, yeah, but we have a lot, anyways. Uh, that's a hard position to fill because, you know, people don't like to be in jobs where they sometimes have to say no to somebody, but, so... Managed to have a, a five-person board for several years now, but Skip, I mean, Dave Barnowski, as you know from the last meeting, he's moving out of town. And won't be available for anything in Woodbury for a while, or forever. Uh, but they did find a woman who was interested. Now, I don't know why she, I don't, I think I sent this to Jonah, always not here. Anyways, Becky Browning, who lives on Greenwood Lake, is interested.
And you spoke to her?
Yeah, I spoke to her, I just told her a little bit about what was involved. She had already talked to Jonah, and she had talked to Skip Marcasani, and, uh...
Do we make, does the select board make the appointment?
Yes.
Okay, and we did that this evening, or we'd have her come in and, uh...
Well, she offered to come in and, but Jonah was gonna come in and tell us about her, but she's not here, so...
I think he might still show up.
Yeah, we can wait, or we can make the ap, we should make the appointment because we do have things coming up.
Right.
Yeah.
I have a question for the minute, so Jonah is not resigning?
Right, Dave Barnowski is resigning. Jonah is now the chair.
He just notified you, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll do whatever the board thinks, whether we should circle back to this, or, uh, the time is at six forty. Yeah, so we're, we're, we're right on schedule, so maybe we'll wait.
Okay, we can see if he...
Just need to remember to do that before the end of the meeting, like, can't attend before doing that.
An asterisk next to it, so we don't forget.
Doesn't mean anything, right? All right, and on to Mr. Gray.
Okay, um, so the USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service grant, um, the matching funds. I did make phone calls about, uh, whether or not the town could use the leftover FEMA money that we, um, have, um, created a fund for. And initially, um, the USDA folks, uh, yes, we could use them because they're technically now in the town coffers. Um, but, um, you know, I, I asked Bob Thompson, who is the main person that I've been communicating there, and he sent that question on to, um, uh, what was her name? Anyway, somebody who oversees the grants, and, um, basically, um, he was told, and he passed it on to me, that, um, the cost-sharing requirements can't come from a federal source. So, um, now I'll just read you the text. If the award has specific cost-sharing requirements, cost-sharing participation in other projects, must not be counted toward meeting a specific cost-share requirement of this award. Cost share must come from non-federal sources unless otherwise stated. So, um, as far as I'm concerned, you know, that was the management analyst. We can't use that money. So it'll, it's, it'll be up to the select board to decide whether we wanna proceed with this grant and, um, use, um, other monies, town monies somehow, to pay for the, the cost share, or basically twenty-five percent match.
And what was the total number that is twenty-five percent of? Can you remind me?
Well, the grant is for two projects. One is the Catat Road, Buck Lake Brook, and the other is for a smaller project, um, on Chris Byron's land, mostly to clean out, um, the stream is filled up with sediment from the flooding, um, which the road crew has said that they could do. But technically, the town's, um, cost share for the construction is thirty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars.
That's the town share.
That's the town share, yeah.
Thirty-seven what?
Thirty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-six.
So that's for both projects, but most of it is for the...
Yeah, the bulk of the cost is, is...
So the Chris Byron project could be done just...
By the town.
As their, be part of our construction budget, if, if they determine that that's needed.
Michael, can you, I, I know, I ask you this every time, but can you remind me of the timeline for this?
Well, right now, we have a grant agreement award that, uh, we either need to decide whether we want to keep it, do the grant, or not. So that's kind of the, the next step in the timeline. But the timeline at this point for this project would be, um, obviously, you know, money was held up, um, by USDA, so they would be doing the, um, engineering and design work, and some of the permit work, um, for the project. And they're not gonna get to that until next year, but they have far fewer engineers than they used to have from the DOGE, from kind of firings or layoffs or whatever they were. So, um, so the timeline would, if we were to continue with the grant, um, the timeline would be that that engineering work would probably happen sometime this winter. And then, um, and then what we, what we would need to do is, uh, then put out an RFP, get a, you know, get bids, hire a contractor, um...
Okay.
And then, uh, and we, the town doesn't have to, um, isn't obligated, um, for a commitment until the construction starts.
And that's because without engineering, there's no way to know exactly what this project might cost. So like, our, our town share, twenty-five percent might be, it might be higher than that.
Might be higher or might be less. I mean, this is, I would imagine that they, um, you know, the, the amount that they included for the grant, that they, it's kind of based on some kind of knowledge of what it would cost. And with the specifics of what the work would be, is probably what they, what they base it on. So, so yeah, so it probably, the construction would probably happen, um, I would say, probably, um, next fiscal year.
Now, at one point, you said that they would do the engineering as, as part of their cost, but I think you said that that's not longer true?
Yeah, they have, they have, part of what they're, um, awarding us also is technical assistance, and I assumed that that meant the engineering. Um, but I did clear that up with Bob Thompson. He said, no, that they would do the engineering, the technical assistance is more for, um, you know, um, time managing, uh, like the bids and quotes, um, hiring an engineer, or hiring, you know, if we were, town wanted to hire someone to oversee the project, like a project manager. So, and Bob did mention that, um, you know, I, I thought that amount was kind of low, and, um, Brian Voight, who, at, uh, CBRPC, thought it was kind of low, so I asked him about that. And, um, he said that there is more money available for that, um, but basically that the town would have to request any additional funds. So let's say, for example, we hired Nate Seacard to oversee the project, um, and, you know, put together an RFP, and, um, the town would send it out. You know, if he, if we were to hire an engineer to oversee the project, what we would do first is get a quote from that engineer for the work, that work, and then do a letter of, of request for additional funds. And so usually, those letters are, are granted, so, um... And, you, you know, the language in the grant agreement is that anything over the technical assistance is, again, on the town's dime. So we would have no idea of what those costs would be, but, um, until we actually contacted an engineer to get, uh, be a... I mean, it's what we put that up to bid to.
Is it, can I jump in?
Sure.
Um, it seems like there's very little risk to the town to pursue both of these, and that in the event that they, it sounds like they can also be split up, so that these projects could happen independently, and that if we were able to afford one, we can pursue that, and one or the other, or both if the town can afford it. But in the meantime, um, what would be the drawback of signing that grant agreement?
Nothing yet, we, we still are, we are obligated to a commitment by signing the grant agreement. I think that's just telling them that we, that we wanna move forward on it.
So is this project, the, the people who know, I mean, I don't know where Elfi is, but you and Skip should know some of this. Is this really a high-priority project for the town because it was...
Well, um, so that bank has washed out a number of times now. We did do the transemergency grant one time to do the repairs. And with the flooding that we've had the last two summers, the bank is compromised again. There are two washout areas about seventy-five feet in length, um, you know, and... So, yeah, if we get another heavy rain event that floods, um, you know, comes down Buck Lake Brook, those washed-out areas will probably get washed out more, and, and there remains some of the road like we did, um, back in two thousand nineteen.
So this project involves like a, a concrete wall down by the edge of the stream, and then...
Let me find the language for what...
Riprap over on the rest of the bank?
So let me tell you what the scope, I don't have a, kind of a rough idea, but, so... So in Catat Road, it would be stream bank protection. Um, it says armor two seventy-five-foot sections of stream bank with ten-foot-high by five-foot-thick riprap with pinned concrete sill.
With what?
A pinned concrete sill, so...
A pinned concrete sill?
Yeah, a pinned concrete sill means that, uh, whether it's concrete blocks, or whether it's a poured form, there will be, um, bars of metal drilled into the ledge.
Yeah.
That would hopefully hold that in place.
Oh, oh.
Robin, you have a quick question?
Yeah, back to Skip's question. If we had overage in the buyout, could we use that money towards this project?
No, that's what I just was reading. We can't use this federal funds to for, to fund our town mat. I mean, we could pay for the whole damn thing if we wanted to after they do the engineering. Well, we could, because then we're using federal funds again. We could just not agree to do the grant, um, and have someone like Nate do a, um, engineering design work, and then pay for the whole thing ourselves, but that would be a big chunk of the...
I don't choose it, Michael, like, two hundred and fifty?
Their estimate is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Let's say a hundred and fifteen, let's say a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars when you round it off.
I can't see any drawback from, from going for this thing, but...
If we self-identify that as a litigation project and prioritize it, I suppose we could do it.
But we, they wouldn't be able to do the design work first, so we'd be paying the engineer and stuff.
Pay Nate or someone like that.
Well, why would we, why would we go that route of, uh...
If everything else failed.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Or if we didn't want to do this grant agreement, um, then obviously we would have to come up. If we wanna fix the bank's stream bank.
So how much more damage is gonna be done to that bank with that extra amount of trucking coming down off the hill?
The, that trucking really doesn't have anything to do with it, I mean...
The vibration itself will...
I suppose it might, but, um, I, that, I mean, the real damage that's being done is from the high fluid to water coming down the hill.
But I do kinda wonder, I, I mentioned it, I think, last time, like, we've, we have talked about, speaking with Swenson, about sort of renegotiating, you know, our reimbursement, and it does seem like this project would benefit them if it was done, because they need that road to run their trucks on. So I still have, I mean, I know, obviously, like, we haven't even talked to them, but it's like floating in my mind that it might be something, maybe they'd be interested in helping us out somehow. And to that end, I was curious if the, if the thirty-seven thousand dollar match, does that have to be cash money? Or could there be materials involved in that that went towards that match?
You mean like some of the other grants that we do?
Like in kind, but I don't mean labor, I guess, in this case. I mean, like, say if somebody wanted to donate a bunch of riprap, would the monetary value of that, could that go towards the thirty-seven thousand?
Yeah, clearly it would be the town expense, as long as we had an invoice paying for it. We could split that as part of the reimbursement.
Okay. I wonder if, I don't know, I wonder if that's worth...
I mean, I, here's my select board memory kicking in. When we, we had a plan to pave the road right up to the quarry entrance a number of years ago. A lot of people in town objected, and so the select board dropped it. But Swenson was not interested in paying for any of that.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if they would be, you know, I know Alfie is planning on getting some stone from them for the Wilbur Road project. So they might, they might do that, especially as to their benefit that have that road working for them.
So all we really need to decide on tonight is whether we would like to pursue this grant or not, correct?
Well, we don't have to decide that tonight, but you know, they are kind of waiting. Because we have, we have been put off from the last time they get these questions answered. So, yeah, I mean, if you wanted to continue with this grant, we could sign it tonight and then continue on. They'll, you know, they'll start putting it on the dock, I think, for the engineering design work. And I have no idea, you know, Bob Thompson didn't have no idea when that would get finished.
I'm still not clear whether they're, they're going to pay for the design work.
They are, a hundred percent.
It's not part of the...
Part of the grant.
All right, thank you.
Well, I think we should go for it. I don't see any reason to wait.
I agree, a hundred percent.
Okay, well, here's...
Diana?
Well, I just can't imagine us putting an extra thirty-seven thousand dollars in our budget for one project. But it could happen if it's important.
We can only say no later, right?
So here's the...
Hopefully, we don't have to, but especially if, you know...
It does have Diana's name there as select board chair, because at the time of this...
That's perfect. I just had Diana sign it.
Well, I'm not the select board chair, so let's just cheat.
Cross it out?
You didn't even sign my name right down there.
Yours looks just like mine, so I'll sign it.
All right.
I'm going to write that, I'm going to print, print your name, because I'm afraid you might scribble it. You can scribble your signature.
Maybe we could get Swenson to pay the town thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Thank you, Michael.
Sure. So the next thing on my list is, do you want to wait to, for the status report on the other road grants for when Alfie is here?
I don't know where you...
All right, I can tell you where they're at, I guess, at this point, but...
Maybe wait, because I have a feeling they'll want to reiterate those, end up going through twice.
So the local hazard mitigation plan. So I think I sent you guys an outline of where that's at at the moment, but it has been reviewed by Vermont Emergency Management. They asked for some revisions, which our contractor, Paul Luciano, Luciano did, kind of conferring with the committee. So they have approved the, our local hazard mitigation plan. So the next step is for the select board to sign a certificate of local adoption. And once that's signed and sent back to Vermont Emergency Management, they will send it to FEMA. And FEMA will do a final review and approval.
And this is just something we have to do. This isn't...
This is every five years that we have to do it. And the main reason it gets done is because then the town is eligible for FEMA money.
Yeah.
That's pretty much it, you know, it's...
Before it's not paid.
Yeah, yeah, otherwise, you know, if we didn't, if we didn't have a local hazard mitigation plan when the flood in 2023 happened, we would have been eligible for FEMA.
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, so here is a certificate of local adoption. It has to be signed by all select board members and then witnessed by the town clerk. And I'm kind of doing this for John Gordon, you know, Reed as our emergency management director. He wasn't able to be here tonight. So he and I have been corresponding about this.
I believe you go back to my...
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I'll scan it and send it.
Let's see.
Do you want to hear me give my spiel about iPad for doing the road grant work? Okay, so did you guys give me the other grant agreement thing? I just don't want to lose it.
Signed it.
Okay. I probably put it underneath. There, okay, there it is. So one thing that would really help me in doing this grant work is to have an iPad, a small hand iPad that I could use right in the field, where it would tell me what road segment I'm on. It'll tell me where I am on the road segment, where different apps that I could have on that iPad that would allow me to do all of that, all of the work that you now, except for the reports, right on the road, in the field, we'll call it. And the reason I'm, you know, the, when the Vtrans comes or when the Better Roads people come, they have these things and they really know right where they are. It just looks so much easier than me having to look at the map on my iPad, on my laptop and then kind of say, okay, that one is right about there, that's where Cannon's, you know. So I have no idea where I am there, but I have, I have a rough idea, and so I'm going to figure that out. I can't put any info, you know, you could put information in while you're due, while you're there. So it would save me a lot of time with my kind of antiquated equipment. I know that the road crew does have some kind of iPad. I don't, we got that for them a number of years ago.
They have some kind of tablet.
When Harry was there, right?
Well, I think it was after here. I think it was when Greg Parkers was there. I don't know what they do with it. Mostly, they took photographs with it as far as I know.
Probably not an iPad. It might be some kind of a tablet or something.
Well, it was a, yeah, it was, it was, these iPads are like little teeny things. And the thing that we got them was like maybe like an eight and a half by eleven or eight by ten panel. But it might work. So I think...
Anything that, that old, it's probably not good.
Okay, right, yeah, who knows?
Yeah, I'm not an Apple user, but...
It was an Apple, Michael. Because we're all PCs.
Yeah, well, this was one that they could take with them.
Yeah, it's probably a Microsoft Surface or something like that.
I have no idea.
Would you want it to be the same thing, or does it not need to be, or...
No, I don't, I would, I would like to have what, what the Vtrans people have. And I'm kind of covered in this little tool that they have.
Do you have any idea what the price is?
It would be less than a thousand dollars. And I can find, if, if you think, if you would like me to come up with some amounts and what, I don't know if the apps are free or whatever, I can find out from the Vtrans, Better Roads folks, what the cost would be.
I could be wrong, but it sounds like we might need to pay for a cell plan for it to, to be able to be used in the field.
I, yeah, I don't know how they, I don't know how they use it.
To be able to have data in the field, like think, which is fine.
Yeah, I'll find out what all of the costs would be, if you'd like.
And you know, John Reed has a...
Thinking of contacting him.
He's got like some sort of like, kind of aftermarket or secondhand refurbished type of technologies. So for things that...
I don't think Skip does anything with apples. I mean, the other Skip, the computer Skip.
The rough Skip.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I'll, I'll find out some dollar amounts and...
Okay.
Just decide what it is, and then you can talk with John Reed.
Yeah, I would definitely have John provide the same thing. One of the Better Roads guys trying to make that a part of, like, we have this road inventory grant that we have recently received. And he was kind of encouraging his higher-ups to allow people with that, with the inventory grants to actually purchase one of these tools. But so far, they said yes. In, in the future, I don't know how often the road inventories have to be done, but we're due to have one done by the end of 2027, fiscal year 2027. You know, the town could actually do the inventory themselves with this particular tool.
Michael, just remind me, this is the, that grant that you're speaking about. It's the, it's for water shifts, correct? Is that the one that we discussed?
Well, any of the grants, any of the Vtrans, Better Roads, Grantsonade, all hydro, the segments of road that you can apply for, the grants are hydrologically connected.
Okay.
So, and it would vary, that's pretty much almost, not all of the roads, but pretty much all of them. All right, well, I'll... Are we ready to rock?
I was just going to remind you not to forget to go back to our asterisks.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Jonah yet. All right. Thanks, Michael. Skip?
All right, in your handout, if you look at the disaster forty-eight, ten, DRT, there's really been no change to that. Even though I remember shooting under that section. I did ask for the city, she didn't mark up the system. Officer, August twenty-second, and is still waiting for resolution. So what I'm waiting for, if you look on the second page of your handbook, this is the proper completion and certification report for that disaster. This is the 2024 disaster. So if you know it on the road, my signature, I signed it on June twentieth. So one would expect that it's been close to three months now. And we haven't received any money from the state. So that to me is not troubling, but it's just, you know, you really, I suppose, have to be patient. You know, we're patient with FEMA, we received our money. So I suppose we should be patient with the state so we can get those, as Michael was talking about earlier, the EREF funds, which are due to us for not only this project, but also for the 2023 project. So, you know, continue to monitor that. And maybe one day Lily will receive a surprise transmittal into her accounts from the state.
That would be great. I'll make sure, I just made it up here that I'm keeping an eye out for that for him.
So, you know, it's thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, but every dime helps. Okay, for the next disaster, which is forty-seven twenty, that's a 2023 disaster. So it's in the closeout stage, which is very good. So what happens is, when it comes to the closeout stage, FEMA will send me an email. And it says, your project's ready to close out. And I jump onto the portal and I upload, in this case, invoices for Town Highways twenty-three, twenty-four, before and after photos, updated disaster inventories, and again, photos and things like that. So, okay, a day afterwards, I get an email from the Vermont Emergency Management person. And she said, do not do these updates, do not, you know, close out this project on the FEMA portal. Send all the information through us, through their project manager, which is something new, something unique to this. Because before, we would just upload everything into FEMA and they would send the necessary documentation. However, things have changed, so let me read you an email. So it says in capitals, please do not submit closeouts to the portal. They are only submitted by VEM after review. So that's brand new. So, and then she goes on to say, this is a small project, so full closeout is not required. We need, we need a PCCR, which is the next, another document I'll show you, and cost documentation to close the project. So everything that she asked for is up on the FEMA portal. So I went back in my files and sent them all to them. So they're already on the FEMA portal and they're at Vermont Emergency Management.
She didn't ask you to take them off the FEMA portal. We probably couldn't do that anyways.
I can't do that. Once, once they're up there. So anyhow, we come to this agreement that I wrote back, so I'll never go on the portal again. And she wrote back, she said in capitals, well, don't do that. We need you to certainly log in and check the portal for projects. Okay, anyhow, so we've got over that, or we now have an agreement that I'll send everything to them. But I will monitor the portal to make sure they do their job. Pushing it up onto the portal, you know, so we can get closeup for this project. And again, the town can get their EREF money, which in this case is substantial. So...
Can you, can you remind me of that EREF money? Is that what you said?
Yes, that's what, Michael's working on that EREF document that has to be done every five years. So it allows us to get FEMA funding and a percentage of the total costs for any disaster. So for the 2023 funding, I think they're sending us seven point eight percent of the total...
The state portion.
The state portion.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, and our portion for that would be two point two percent.
Yep.
Did I say that right? So, you know, another, or I should say, challenge. They also want to inspect the work on Town Highways twenty-three and twenty-four.
Yeah, I know.
So, and the folks that are going to inspect it are Vtrans. So my expectation would have been the person who made out the H and H study from A and R would be the person to inspect it to make sure that we covered all of the specifications and work required for that H and H. But no, it's the Vtrans district project manager from District Six. She and I are meeting eight o'clock Tuesday morning at Town Highway twenty-three, is that the show? Yes.
Tomorrow?
Oh, next week.
Okay.
Next week. So, and to me, it just, you know, I don't understand what they're going to look at. You know, because it's not, it's not a Vtrans highway. It's a class three and a class four road. So they really don't have anything.
They didn't do the H and H study?
They just advised for, for VEM.
Yeah, but you would think A and R, you know, would be much more of a comprehensive inspection if it was A and R. So anyhow, you know, I'll send an update after the inspection next Tuesday. Well, so anyhow, you know, I'll send an update after the inspection next Tuesday. I, I reached out to Nate Zikar, and I reached out to Alfie, and I said, you know, you guys are busy, let me, let me go. And if there's any issues, I'll take note of them and send it to you. So we won't tell you them.
Sounds like a formality, whatever.
Yeah, but there are so many formality, you think about. So anyhow. So let's move along. So on page three of your handout, you'll see what happened in trouble. If you look at project number seven four one six eighty eight and seven four one six ninety one. Under the actual date completed, I put in August twenty seven, twenty twenty five for both projects. So, and that's what caused some issue, because until they inspect it, they don't believe that it's actually completed. So, and the work completion percentage used to be seventy five percent, now it's at a hundred percent. So that's what caused them to, to write that and be corrupted. Anyhow, so we're working to close out the R four seven two zero, and that'll be good, because that's been, I don't know, two, two years and two months working on that project, so it's kind of getting stale. All right, any questions on the two disasters?
The forty eight ten.
Yeah.
The Z management cost, the first line there.
Yeah.
The activity completion date is supposed to be twenty twenty eight?
Well, yes. That's, that's when the last date you have to complete that project.
Oh, okay.
However, you know, if you complete it sooner, you know, that's, that's better.
Okay.
We had to write down extensions for Town Highway twenty three and twenty four, because we couldn't complete the mitigation project within that timeframe that FEMA wanted us to complete. So we wrote for project extensions for both of those. And we were granted project extensions to October thirty first, I think, this year. So we're all done. So I'm just waiting for paperwork and whatever minutia they throw at you. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be done with both of them. So mitigation project. Uh, do we have anything? Okay, let me just go over. Roof replacements, town offices, hopefully the bid opening will be tonight.
The reverse?
Yeah, sometime.
There you have one bid here.
Really got one?
So when we move on, we can open up a bid afterwards.
Okay.
And so the tasks start and finish dates and resources haven't changed. Base of water pooping, uh, I guess there was only one person that showed up for the site visit.
Correct.
So those bids are due to Robin on September twenty.
Looking for the site visit.
Prince date?
Base water, yeah. Okay, and lastly, Town Clerk's Office window replacement. So Robin, Lily, and I were talking about why there's so few bidders for these things, so we were wondering if the Ts and Cs were two. Or a risk, or whatever you want to call it. So Lily reached out to V L C T and sent me a document that passive created about insurances and other things, terms, like terms and conditions that are much more condensed. So what I did is I modified that R F B, and now the insurance section is like three paragraphs instead of an entire page. So, you know, it's much more concise, and hopefully there'll be more bidders, because the fewer Ts and Cs, I believe, the better. And hopefully you folks have been able to read that and approve it tonight, so we can get the advertisements out by this coming Thursday.
I did.
Okay.
Um, and I, I just had some formatting things, I don't know, that I, I did it this afternoon, so I didn't have a chance to finish it. I don't even think they're that big a deal, but like, uh, do you have it in front of you?
Uh, somewhere here.
I can pull it up on my computer. I don't even think they're that big a deal.
Well, certainly, that is a, we'll take that one. I remember when we had some trees cut on Anzworth Road in that R F B, the one person that bid on it was totally overwhelmed by all the insured stuff, but submitted a bid anyway. So they couldn't prove.
Yeah, that's good. Uh, page four, section one point one seven. There's two As.
Look, I was in J's.
It's A, when the bid is awarded, and A, the contractor shall give notice. I'm assuming that should just be another B. Good, this is nine A, formatting stuff.
This is the window replacement one?
Yeah.
So when the bid is awarded, the contractor?
Exactly. They both say, are labeled A online.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Right, that should be a B?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's two page fours.
Yeah, it's the second of the.
The second, okay.
Yeah, and then on page five, um, two point two, I think that that, instead of that, see that bold B for that section? Should be an A, yep. And then that, that was all I had, but then the other thing that I was wondering, if we went down the timeline, and I'm not even sure how to do this, but I think the other thing that might be discouraging for folks is like, if they, you know, a lot of people are really busy by this time of the year, and if they wanted to submit a bit, submit a bid, but weren't able to do the work until next spring, how would we communicate that to them?
Start, complete date, and negotiable?
Yeah, yeah, maybe that's, I don't know, that's something that is worth pursuing, because.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
I mean, everybody I know would.
Straight up.
Yeah, they're busy, they wouldn't.
How long would you hold their, uh, their bid response for? You know, how long would the pricing stay?
Right, that's a good question.
Yeah, because materials may go, you know, fluctuate.
Right.
And one where they go get the glass from, because this is kind of special glass, it may have some sort of terrible.
That's a really good point.
So how long would you expect a contractor to keep that going for?
Would we want to consider adding like a contingency in there to allow them to extend the bid? Because obviously, they're not going to want to eat the cost if materials go through the roof, but, um, could we add some kind of a contingency in there to like, I don't know, let them know that if things change?
Sure could.
Okay.
Or, I mean, I guess the other option is that we just see what happens, and then reissue the bid again in the winter, when folks are not replacing windows.
Yeah.
You know.
And they have time possibly, though.
Time, and maybe are interested in.
So are you asking them to hold off on the bid?
No, I'm saying, I would, I, I would say we go for it, see what happens, maybe get more than, more than one. And then if we don't get any, or we can maybe just resubmit, re, reissue it again when things get a little bit wider for folks.
Do you think it might be necessary, um, for them to special order any of this material?
I mean, it's all gonna be, it's gonna be eight weeks, probably, anywhere from six to eight weeks from the time that they.
So this doesn't allow that much time, but.
I guess it depends.
Would it be better?
October thirtieth to.
Better to wait?
November nineteenth.
Get more bidders?
Yeah. At least, at least we can flush out the bidders if we go.
Well, one night, I mean, if you get one bid, you could, let me go with it, right?
No, don't think we do, no.
But it would be hard then, at that point, compare.
Yes.
So you wouldn't know if it was a good thing.
Right, right.
Skip, you want to say something?
Yeah, I could amend the start and complete date, and I could redo the timeline, give more time. But I'll have to find some.
How do we create that language, though, about the, you know, the material pricing?
Uh, somebody recently sent me, like, basically a contingency addendum. Um, I couldn't read it, it was like such a lengthy thing, but that's pretty much what it's for. So I could forward it to you guys if you want to have a look at it.
I just bring this up as a, something to think about, but.
Actually, Skip.
Trying to, not trying to slow things down at all.
Forward it to you right now.
No, I'd like to see as many bidders bid on something like this, and bid on everything, and just have one bidder.
I mean, I think you could send it to like, that company Window World in Burlington, and they would have it, but they might be the only ones that.
I know. Otherwise, of course.
Yep.
So I know this glass is, according to the, I've been working with a guy who's been in the commercial glass industry for the past thirty five years. And he says this is special material stuff.
Okay.
Okay, let me do some more editing to this, and next board meeting, we'll be able to pin it off. May not, may not happen till next spring. Okay.
Thanks.
All right, so I did that. Uh, work on the coverage, your name's ongoing. Yes, it does. I don't, yeah. And as Lily mentioned earlier, she and I are needing to go over the mitigation account and do some reconciliation on that, see how much is left, and, uh, well, roof replacement, I had roof replacement costs would be accounted for as well. So if we choose to, if you choose to open up that bid for roof replacement, then we'll know how much, uh, money we'll have to reserve for the, uh, that project.
I say we open it.
I do too.
Skip, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, just wanted to touch base with you. We had said that we were going to send Alfie the Excel sheet.
Yes.
To, have you done that?
No.
No, okay, but I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
All right, and you'll be happy to know that I concluded the Vermont State Ethics Commission training.
Good job.
Yay!
Skip or John will be so proud.
I sent him a email, he didn't respond, he's probably still picking himself up. So I have one more comment. Uh, so December twenty ninth, that will be my last select board meeting.
What?
My last select board meeting as FEMA point of contact and recovery officer, because I believe the projects will be closed by then, and wrapped up sufficiently that it will just be Lily making sure that the E R A funds can be sent. We'll probably should be able to say, but I will write the twenty twenty five report for the town report. For the twenty twenty five town report, but on the twenty ninth, it'll be my last meeting.
What date was that?
December twenty.
December twenty nine.
Right.
Sad day.
Sad, but exciting. We'll still see you for other stuff, I'm sure. We'll still see you for other stuff, I'm sure.
I don't know about that.
No, we've got other things to do.
You probably will.
Oh.
So that's all.
Let's open that bid.
Working on it.
Exciting.
Ta-da, 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 ta-da.
One person.
Do we know how many spurt in here?
A roof, that is.
Let's say, who's it from?
Vermont?
Vermont Construction Company.
Snow Country never sent theirs, huh? They said they were gonna.
No, we see that.
Roofers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wow. Roof replacement, town hall and town office, town hall and town office, oh, two co, two, oh, three copies, wow, all right, all right. Oh, look at the pretty pictures. Roof color choice, they got the right one, yeah. Okay.
So they are for the town offices, it's about thirty six eight, and the town hall is thirty four.
Town's reasonable, well, you know, I can't really find this.
I think that that's probably what it is.
Can I see?
Oh, yeah.
Because I just want to be sure that they're proposing to FEMA.
How much was it?
Thirty six eight, six five for the town office, and thirty four one seven five for the town office.
Thirty four one seven five.
And that is, they do have like a linear foot price if they need to replace trim, and if they need to replace decking, it's a square foot price that they have. Two dollars and sixty cents, six, sixty six cents.
So first word by H three, and it says product information.
Yep.
And that's perfect, for what FEMA would be requesting.
Great.
Cool.
So that would reduce us that, uh.
Seventy?
Yeah, by, by seventy.
That's what it's there for.
Yep. We're never going to get it replaced by FEMA any other time, so.
No, I hope not.
Look at that, they've got the.
Work to begin on September twenty two, that's like next week.
You see the front of the, from the bid packet?
Yeah, that's very, yeah, it's a very slick presentation.
Hope we chose a good color, because in this picture, it looks bluish. The color chart we had before, it looked silver, but it looks.
No, I had, I think I picked the second. Set me one of them gray.
It didn't when we chose it, but, I don't know.
Looks like dark gray here. I wouldn't mind if it was a lighter gray, but.
Oh, wait, which one is it?
Color choice. Anybody remember?
It was a gray.
We had the.
I can't imagine that these colors are all that different in price.
No, I just think it'd be horrible if it was.
Slate gray, dull gray.
We thought, that's all.
Champagne, free weather, Galvano.
I guess that would entertain a motion.
Is this, was, is this within the, the, uh, size of a price that you were thinking of when you proposed the project? Or proposed to use that much money?
Okay.
What was the name of the company that submitted?
Vermont Construction Company.
Would you look at also the costing for, say, if they have to replace any sheeting?
Yeah.
Is there a square footage cost or?
There is, uh, so it is. Yeah, two sixty six for sheeting, and then fifteen dollars per linear foot for roof trim.
So is that some recent results?
I think so.
Just one question about the town hall, um, what about the soffits, you know, the bat thing, is that going to be part of this project?
It was supposed to be.
It is.
Okay.
That's part of the terms and conditions, that if they find anything wrong.
Which is probably, that roof trims, but they've got a linear foot price to replace, fifteen dollars a linear foot.
And it has to be replaced, especially in the town hall, with light type. Material, not material, but it has to look the same. Because it is on the National Register of Historic Places.
So I guess the only, um, the only thing we could do to, like, really, because we don't have anything, another bid to compare against, is if we figured out the square footage, you know, what their price is per square foot. If we, if we wanted to do any, um, we could go get a rough measurement and figure it out.
Do we have to either approve or not approve tonight, or can this wait?
Just kind of would be to approve it tonight.
Uh-huh.
Usually we have more than a bid, but.
If they're planning to, if they are gonna start on September twenty-two, then, yeah.
Right.
I think it's not out of the ordinary, it's not crazy, it's ma- yeah, maybe a little bit high, but not.
This is a really big company, so maybe probably can do it this year. Let's see.
Yeah, I mean, we set the timeline, right?
We can read the numbers.
What do you guys think?
They're the only ones that bid on it, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
We'll get it done. So, is there a motion regarding this?
I will make a motion to approve the bid, the bid from Vermont Construction.
For the roof replacement for the town hall and the town offices.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Alright, do we need to sign anything here?
Yep.
Yep.
What we have to do is enter into a contract with these folks at some point.
Okay.
I thought I saw, oh, here it is. The contract time of completion. So it's like five pages in. Contract agreement for town offices. Is this part of what you sent?
I can't see that on here.
I don't think so, I think this came from them, but.
Yeah, but they didn't fill in the contractor's name, they left that in red. So that's why I thought it might have been something that, uh.
That's him from here. Yeah, okay.
That's a contract.
Oh.
So perhaps they might wanna sit down with you folks.
Okay.
Both of you, one of you folks, and agree on the contract sum, and then sign at the same time. So, perhaps you wanna call them or something, just say congratulations or not. And, uh, just leave with a representative. Maybe this Elena, Elena?
Elena, Elena? Town hall, town offices.
Vermont Construction, alright.
So you're gonna, um, call them and.
See if we can meet, yeah. Actually, maybe I'll see if we can come to a meeting.
Should we just approve it and give you the authorization to, to sign it when you are satisfied after you meet with them? So we don't have to waste another couple of weeks?
Sure.
Did you just make a motion?
Well, we approved the bid.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
We didn't necessarily approve, I mean, I think, I don't know if you need to make a motion to allow me to sign it. But we did, we've already approved the bid, we voted it.
Okay.
Voted on it.
Well, then I think that includes authorization to sign it.
Yeah. I'll call them and see if we can't, uh, figure out when we. Thanks, Skip. It'll be nice to have a new roof on both those places. It'll be nice to have a new roof on both those places.
It will.
Alfie, do you wanna keep one of these? Anybody's back on the road? Tires back on?
Tires back on.
Alright.
Yeah, we're actually in town, so it's not, not look very, so.
So we saved, uh, any conversation about mitigation work through your portion of the meeting.
Okay.
You wanna, I'll say, I saw the, the stuff over there on, um, Wilbur Road looks great.
Yeah, that's actually a grant.
Grant, okay, right.
Mitigation.
Still looks good.
Still looks good, right, it's coming. Uh, we didn't work on it much last week, because we hauled sand.
Yep.
Uh, we're back at it this week, starting to put stone in. And all the things down over the bank. So that's happening. I'm gonna try to stick to it as much as I can this week to get that done. Last week, we hauled a bunch of sand, we're down, we need, we need another almost thousand yards left to finish our haul. So we're gonna keep trying to plug away at that, uh, rainy days and whatnot.
And does that fill up the, will that, will there be any left at, at the?
It should put us in the shape, that's our, that's what we signed contract for, is three thousand yards. So we haul, I think it's nineteen hundred right now, so a little over a thousand is what we need. To finish that. Uh, I had a little problem with the grader, which is now fixed, they came Friday and fixed it, and I took it out today, it seems to be fine. So we lost a couple days with that. Didn't seem to be too, I don't know if there, I don't think it's a big deal, it's not gonna be a big, uh, bill for fixing it. But it's back in action.
Good.
Um, mitigation, I talked to, or I got an email from Nate Secard, and he's not thinking he can help us with our projects, uh, particularly on the county road for this year. So I think we're kind of out of luck with, with those, those other projects on our list.
For this year?
For this year.
Yep.
Yeah, we're still waiting for one hydraulic study that hasn't come in yet, too.
Right, right. So that's kind of a bummer, but, you know.
Do you have any, any idea of what they might cost so that that money can be, you know, set aside for them? You mean at a fifty thousand dollars apiece, or a hundred, or?
I'm thinking, well, it depends some on whether the highway crew does it themselves, or if it goes to contract. Because personally, they're gonna do it a lot quicker. I'm gonna say at least fifty thousand, probably between fifty and seventy-five each one would be a fair number.
And there's three of them in that category, so far?
Well, if we go with everything that's on the list, uh, there's three of them. But the, uh, Nate didn't think we should do anything with the one that's closest to the county road, or near the waterfall. He says it's, it's, it's only producing water certain times of the year, and that's probably not worth changing.
That's the culvert near Diego's, that one?
No, no, the one further by the guardrails, by the waterfall.
Okay, yeah.
That's overtopped several times and washed the road out. I'm not sure that I agree with this, uh, opinion there. But if, when we can still do it, we just, you know, we have to get him convinced, or get in, engineer convinced to design it for us.
If we don't do that, was there something else you would plug in there, or?
Um, well, there's, there are other bigger culverts out there that, you know, need to be looked at. I mean, I, I put a list together thinking that we could just do it, sort of, but then we found out that we have to have engineering, and the engineer doesn't have time, and. I mean, at this stage in the game, I don't think it's worth trying to get a different engineer, because everybody's gonna be in the same boat, sort of, and we are out of time. So I think that, that there is one more project that I can think of on East Hill, which was created by the floods, so definitely a mitigation. When the two culverts got overtaken up by the four corners, all that water came down the side of the road, and it washed a big gully along the side of the road. And it needs to be filled, it's starting, it's starting to sort of undermine the road in some spots. And there's also a culvert, which is a fifteen inch culvert, needs to be bigger. So that's a project that would definitely, uh, be eligible for, for this money.
Would it, would that require H and H and all that stuff, engineer?
No, no, it's not, it's not a year-round block. It's essentially just groundwater, our service water. But it's a fairly lengthy ditch, and it's gonna take a lot of stone, so it's, you know, I could probably come up with a rough estimate, uh, with a little bit of math and measuring, but, uh, that's a pretty good-sized project. We could add that, um, don't know if we'll have time to do it, uh, this year, given all the circumstances around.
You still have your big excavator?
I do, um, using that on Wilbur Road, because it's down, down over a bank quite a ways. Was thinking of probably getting rid of that after that project. And if we did that along East Hill, we wouldn't need the big excavator. I mean, it, bigger does make it easier, it's more reach and handling that big stones, but I think we could do it with our smaller. If, if time allows.
When, when do you think Wilbur Road will be finished up with the excavator?
That's hard to say, um.
Months, two months?
No, 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 weeks, maybe two weeks, if that.
Okay, I believe we have to pay for another month after the nineteenth.
Okay.
So I'll double check on that.
Okay, the nineteenth is the end of the rental period?
I believe, I know, for one, for one month, you know, the, you know, that's not okay. Um, but I'll double check, because I, I may be misspeaking on the.
Yeah, if you can double check that, verify that, that'd be good for me to know, because I can kind of rush it out. I've kind of been trying to bounce back and forth, trying to get the sand done, trying to get grading done, trying to get that done. Just kind of spreading this out a little bit to keep everybody, uh, everything happening.
Do you ever consider offering your crew overtime, like, on a Friday? Do things that need to get caught up?
Um, that's certainly an option, and I'm sure that they would be interested in that.
I mean, you're the one that has to juggle everything, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I can, I can ask them if they're interested.
If you think it's, if you think it's a good.
Well, I think, you know, the next couple of weeks is gonna tell us a lot as far as time, how much time we have left, what other projects we can't wanna take on, or can take on. I also wanna get the equipment sort of ready for winter, sooner this year than normal. So that's gonna take us a week probably to do all that. So what's it take to add that, add that project on East Hill to the list? Just a nod and a handshake, or?
Just let it out.
Might as well add it, even if it doesn't happen this year.
It seems like it should be added.
Put it on there, still tick through those things in, in order of priority, though, you know, if you feel like that one's number four on that list, then.
Right.
Just a lot long start in the beginning.
Yep.
Okay, that could be a grant project, too, because it is second.
Right, that's a whole process, and it would be another whole year.
Yeah, it would be another year, unless, unless there was money left over from the bidding.
Right, yeah.
And it would depend on how much money, too, of course, to, to do that with a culvert and to hit stone.
Right, right, yeah, I think, I think we're, we would probably top the grant number on that project. So, yeah, we can add it to the list, I can get Skip the information, and then if time allows, we can just do it. And do the same as we have with the others, get the information for Lily. And then we can turn it into a, it'll already be turned into a project, and then we can just treat it the same as the rest of it.
Sounds good.
Can't think of anything else, any questions about roads? Probably nothing?
Not tonight. Unless, well, you take care of the tree down on the county road next to the callous line?
Yes.
Thank you.
Skip has a question. Skip has a question.
It's a recurring theme.
That's right.
Oh, Jesus, God.
Yeah, that's more of a question.
It's a theme, it's a theme.
Uh, yes, that's, that's, hasn't gone away yet.
And the truck's all ordered, and?
Truck is ordered, um, yep, everything's signed, I was gonna check with them today just to make sure everything, because it was kind of a rushed thing. And they got, the salesmen was going on vacation last week, so I was just like, I didn't, I didn't really get a verification, but. Uh, as far as I know, it's all signed, everything's in place, it should be in their queue to get started. So I'm anticipating no more than ninety days from when we sign that, and I'm gonna hold them for that. This should be December, somewhere around there.
It is November twenty-fourth.
Okay.
From the day that I sent it, so as long as we have the confirmation on that, that's ninety days after.
Yep, great, and they actually said it might be sooner than that, they just give a ninety day, just, you know. They said they've done it for like forty-five days, so that would be great, that could happen. So we've got the trailer, the new trailer, um, Lily's working on getting it registered for us and insured. Uh, it's sitting in the yard, nicely shiny, no scratches yet.
And the old one?
The old one, I don't wanna get rid of until we get our new one all legal, legal, ready to go. But I will probably clean that up just a little bit, and then maybe put it down at the town office with a for-sale sign on it or something. That's alright, ladies.
There's something to make money off of it.
Yeah, well, well, it's, it's not about making money, it's about rech, you know, recovering money from the new one, but. We'll get, we'll get something out of it, because it's still usable for, you know, a contractor or something that's.
Have you looked at that fence over on the corner here?
Fence on the corner.
Cabot.
Of Cabot Road, um, uh, what's his name?
Scott Jones.
Scott, yeah.
New car dealership in town?
Yeah, really, it seems a little close.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at it, um, it's supposed to be fifty feet from the center.
Hey, it's gonna be tough, because it's, you know, the road kind of.
Yeah, but the center, well, the, the yellow line would dictate the center, so it'd be, should be easy to measure. And, yeah, I'll, I'll measure it.
Seems like, it just seems like, uh, snow plowing especially is gonna be.
Well, there are times we have to really push it out there, because we'll become, come down off of Cabot Road, it kind of builds up, and we dump it off there each time. So, yeah, I'll measure it and see. If it's in the right way, then he's at his own risk, and he can't hold us liable for damaging it. But he needs to know that.
You have no room to push snow there.
Yeah, yeah, well, uh, I haven't really studied it, but I will now, now that you brought it up, I'll go.
Thank you.
How about, how about measure that and see? I mean, if it is in the right way, we can ask him to move it or move it back, I mean, we have that, it's our right way. Or give him a permit, which he should have been asking for anyways if he's, if he is in the right way.
Yeah, he, I, I heard that he is gonna come back to the board of adjustment to ask for permit, because last time he said he wasn't gonna park anything over there.
Well, he's definitely doing it now. Yeah, yeah. Which, you know, part of me thinks it's good, another business in town, I think.
Oh yeah, but I mean, but the board of adjustment can also tell him to get out of the right way, but I think if he knows that it's in danger of being uh crushed, you know, maybe he could just move it back.
Right, right. Uh, I will, I will take measurement when I'm, when I'm. I guess that's all I've got.
Alright. Thank you.
Just fucking way trying to give, keep it up, keep all the things going.
And all the balls in the air?
The rail trail is still on my list, uh, very soon. Like probably as soon as I finish Wilbur Road, I'll go do that, cause it's a fairly. Fairly quick hidden job, it'll be fast. And I've actually have a way of saving money there as well. We took a bunch of gravel off of King Pond Road, we did a, a box cut, it was a playboil and we box cut it out. I saved that gravel, it'd be perfectly fine for the rail trail.
Awesome.
So I'll put that stuff down in the bottom and then I'll coat it with a, with a nice coat of fresh gravel at the top of it. So that'll cut down on the yardage that we have to purchase for it. So hoping that will happen right after Wilbur. And we can do that with our own machine as well.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you, it's worked.
Great, alright.
So moving on, well, actually, let's circle back to the Jonah Meacham thing that we put off, uh, zoning board of adjustment resignation and appointment. Are we, I, I can't remember where we left it, are we appointing, um?
The uh, person who's uh indicated uh interest and both Skip and Jonah wanted to come tonight and tell you all about her, why she's qualified, but they didn't show up, but I can just tell you a little bit of what she does and she works from home. She's been there probably five years at least and uh she has a job um having to do with commercial real estate lending, so she's very familiar with things like zoning permits and on a national level and.
Can you remind me of her name?
I'm sorry?
Can you remind me of her name?
Becky Browning.
Becky Browning.
And how does that usually work, like, does it need to be advertised that there's an opening on the board or? Just whoever volunteers gets it?
Never can, yeah, that doesn't work.
Right, I didn't think so.
With the planning commission and the board of adjustment.
Okay.
We're lucky to find somebody and we do need somebody soon, yeah.
So is it appropriate to make a motion to appoint her to the?
I can make that, I'll make a motion that we appoint her. Whatever, I don't know, I don't remember what the term is, I think it's three years.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to account, to appoint Becky Browning to the zoning board of adjustment for a term of three years. Is there any discussion?
Would it be three years or would it be the remaining years of?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I think it would probably be three years, but uh.
She's replacing hands. She's willing to do it.
Yeah, alright, you can.
Give her a double, double term.
Dave Bernowski's term expires twenty twenty six anyway, so.
Would that be this town meeting that it would expire or would it be?
Yeah, so we'll probably put her in for two thousand. Well, Jonah's term expires twenty seven, Skip's expires twenty six, so we'll put her in for, what is it now, it's twenty five, twenty seven, twenty eight?
So three years.
Three years, yeah.
Alright, so the motion has not changed, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Alright, um, so we've taken care of that, we'll go down to approve bills and payroll orders, we can do that later. There's a Swenson Act two fifty permit amendment, um, town response should be discussed.
Well, I just wanna, I wanna give you a little reading material.
Right.
Just a little introduction, there's an Act two fifty permit on the website, they have not yet announced uh, any hearing date or anything like that, but uh it's, it's a pretty big deal, they're gonna increase, they're talking about twenty thousand yards of uh, after the crushing, crushing and selling twenty thousand yards. I'm gonna have to check again, there was a, I was looking at a traffic study that was eighty eight pages long. And it had a lot of numbers in it, I, I should, should have checked to see if that was gonna be twenty thousand yards a year. Anyways, um, it will be interesting and the town will have to decide at some point whether or not to get involved.
Is that for the aggregate that they're already homing down on?
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't even mention that, so.
No, they're talking about bringing the crusher in, right?
Right.
So that would be finished product.
Yeah, yeah, but this, the traffic study didn't talk about, probably once they do that, they won't be selling the grout anymore, maybe, I don't know.
Well, they'll process it right there, it'll show itself, but it'll be processed there instead of taking it and hole. Which is another hole, you know, that's, it's a crusher making noise up there. I'll generate some complaints from the neighbors.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a, I mean, the traffic increase is gonna at least double. They're talking fifty trips a day as opposed to right now, they're doing like, what, sixteen maybe? Twelve or fifteen, you know.
That's, that's gonna have an impact on our road.
So Dana, what, um, do you have any kind of, um, suggestion about how?
Not yet.
Okay.
No, I've just given you a heads up.
Okay.
This what's coming.
Thank you, did you come up with all this or, oh no, this is?
This is submitted by Swenson.
Oh, okay.
I went on the A and R, uh, the Act two fifty website, just put in the grant, the number and it's, it's a little complicated, but hopefully they'll send us a full copy of the application at some point, I'm not sure they will though, because it's all online now. We're all expected to read all this stuff on our little screens. So like I was chatting with you earlier, if you could think of any section of that road that really needs to be improved?
Yeah. Well, there's that, that one corner right at the top of the hill, if we could do something with that, it probably takes some adhering, but something to at least straighten it out or park it down, so it's not such a, you know, sharp curve.
Is that the one your daughter conservative on?
Yeah, and there's two, two driveways, well driveway and a road that is right on that corner. So there's traffic entering Cabot all the time.
Is that where that old quarry road comes out to? And then there's the, yeah, the driveway for those, the, uh.
Beansworth.
Okay, okay, Taylor and then Debbie's, right, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's one that stands out in my mind, I can look at it and probably find some others, but.
And down closer to that new entrance, where it gets muddy every spring.
Yep, yep.
You have that many more trucks on there.
Yeah, that's right, it's gonna loosen it up even more. And even the blacktop, you know, the blacktops really take the beating from, and wait, you know. And the fact that the brook runs right there, which Michael's got planned, you know, plans and hopes for repairing that. So yeah, there's a lot, I think there's a lot of work that could be done, especially if there, we're gonna add fifty trips a day.
And it seems like.
On tour of Donny in Deos.
Right, right, yeah, they're, yeah, this is new stuff.
So yeah, I think this is an issue to take really seriously and really think it through before then any signing goes on.
And do we even have any say over this or is this, this is between them and the state, right?
Do we have any what?
Do we have any jur, we don't have any jurisdiction here, do we?
Yeah, well, we have standing, is the Act of Fifty per, oh, what's it called, statutory party status. So we can go to a hearing and explain why that uh certain uh things are warranted to improve the, I mean, there's more and more people living up there all the time, it seems like.
Right.
Robbinsville families up there.
Act of Fifty can put in uh criteria.
Right, yeah, conditions, yeah.
Things that have to be changed in order for it to recover.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay.
Based on your, the select board's request.
Okay. And is that specifically the select board or like would the neighboring homeowners, landowners have the same?
They also have.
Like, I'm just curious like how this happens.
Everybody has an opportunity to weigh in on this decision.
They can request party status, the, the planning commission and the select board have statutory party status, so we don't have to ask, but.
Well, all the people that live on that road from the quarry entrance down through would have a say, right?
Yeah, they'd have to show up and.
Yeah, we'd probably have to write a letter to get, get invited to the meetings and whatnot, but yeah.
And anybody that, even above that, I mean, those people also have to deal with the, meeting those trucks and stuff like that.
And if there's a crusher going all day long, I can imagine that some folks have lived right near the quarry.
Yeah. There's noise.
When we first bought our property up there, the little greenhouse that Dan lives in, you could not hear the quarry. Hugo Meyer could hear it over where he lived, but it was just small enough and enough woods around there, it would just go right over the top of us. Yeah, you can't stand to stay outside in the driveway at Dan's house now.
Now, they've opened that all up on that side, so the sand is just coming right over to you, yeah.
Yeah, when you drive over from Cabot, it's definitely a very prominent part of the hillside there now.
Yeah, they're just gonna keep carving off the top of the hill there.
And there were people, people who live up on top of Pritchill were complaining, can't remember the guy's name, but he was pretty adamant about it.
Yeah, all, yeah, all of a sudden they had this green, this green hillside and in the Act of Fifty permit last time, they said there wouldn't be any aesthetic impact, but then all of a sudden there was.
I mean, it's, there's a quarry, you know.
Of course, they said, they came in. They came and brought um environmental inspector and they decided it was, there was nothing enforceable.
They provide a lot of business though too, you know, they provide a lot of business, so.
Do they?
I think so, all the granite sheds and the truckers and, ready?
It's a business. It's a big business.
Yeah, good or bad, it needs to be looked at. I'm certainly not against the, the business, but I think that, you know, we gotta protect our, our asset, which is the road.
Right, and our people.
And our people.
Well, that's what the permit process is for.
So Dana, do we just follow up this, keep it on the agenda for next meeting?
No, we, yeah, we can, if there's, if there's any changes, I'll keep track of that, now, did you respond to that email where she asked for a current uh email for the planning commission chair?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not the planning commission chair.
Well, she asked for your email address.
Okay, well, um, I resigned from the planning commission chair about a year ago.
And there is no chair right?
All they need is.
Nobody.
All they need is a list.
Really isn't even a planning commission.
All they need is a list of uh members, that, yeah, that's, if she gets that, all they need is some, somebody to be the contact person.
Okay, I, I can be the contact person, but I'm officially not the chair.
Yeah, but you've still got.
Three people.
Jim and Andy, right?
Yep.
Yeah, not enough for anything, if you get one more, you'd at least have a forum.
In mothball stage right at the moment, there's, there's nothing that we're doing. We just say if people in town are interested in being on it and helping out with any of the petitions. And I think three is not even the state statute minimum, it might be just the minimum, I'm not sure. I'd have to look, but the planning commission has to have a certain number of members and a certain, no more than a certain number.
Right.
I can't quite remember.
Yeah, five to nine or something like that, yeah.
Well, I guess we're on to checking if there's any other business, we have an executive session this evening. Unless there's any other business to discuss.
Maybe it should have been just my, but I just have a question about the letter that the conservation commission wanted to send to um the folks that did illegal tire dumping.
We had postponed that in kind of indefinitely after the.
Does that mean indefinitely forever or?
We didn't really talk about that. Are you like wanting to request that we brought back up?
Know that they shouldn't do that again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't even know who's, who's there now.
Well, the same vehicles are still around.
Right.
Pictures. And it did cost the town a couple hundred dollars.
So I still have the pictures, I had been going to write an email, that was kinda how we left it prior to all the things that happened that made us stop, but, um.
I, I think that'd be as a member of the conservation commission, I think probably Paul, but we could write the letter if you'd like.
Sure.
Alright.
Okay, I mean, it's fine with me if it's good with you guys. Um, I assume the photos I have were just copies and that you have originals?
I have, I have um one digital, one of them I have is digitally and the other I think, I think Robin has that. Did you print it out, the ones that they sent from the school?
Yes.
So I have one digital copy, I have any paper copies, but if Robin has the other digital copy, we can make prints.
Okay.
It's not a burning issue, but um I would just like to let them know that or that they shouldn't have done that and, and obviously I think they know they should have, because they didn't do it during the open hours.
So, yeah, I think at this point, they think they got away with it.
Right.
But they didn't.
But they didn't.
They let it out.
It's kinda what I wanna let them know and just ask them not to do it again.
I thought we'd be talking about that issue with the.
At the beginning of the meeting.
Richardson's, yeah, but they didn't come, that's weird.
So I don't need those paper prints, I can.
I, yeah, I just had a thought, um, but I'm gonna keep it to myself.
If they write the letter, we'll make sure that you guys review it first, cause it will be sort of a town thing.
So, yeah, nevermind.
Do you want that in next uh meetings agenda?
Uh, maybe the next first meeting of the month, because the conservation commission would have.
Sounds good. Alright, if there's no other business.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we enter executive session.
And then we have to say why, one V S A, paragraph three one three, six and eight, three?
Yeah, three one three A three.
And we're gonna invite Robin Durden?
Invite Robin, yeah.
Thank you, guys.